This conference will now be recorded.
All right, I'm gonna try again. Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, May 4th, 2020. It is 7:00 PM or shortly thereafter. We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Chrisell.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Treasurer Brenner. City Attorney Lenaman.
Here.
City Administrator Coakley.
Here.
Assistant City Administrator White.
Here.
Police Chief Toronto.
Here.
Finance Director Dollstrand.
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Mentor.
Here.
Deputy Public Work Director Kuppler.
Here.
Mayor Brummel. Here. Thank you, Emily. Reminder that this meeting is entirely via electronic means and not at City Hall. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance as we've done the last few meetings. I'd ask you to say it silently to yourself as I say it out loud. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, we have several proclamations this evening. As a matter of fact, we have a new record of wherethes. The former record was 28. We have 30 tonight, so get comfortable and I'll start right in. They're all great proclamations. First is Building Safety Month, May 2020, and you can start counting now if you'd like. Whereas, "The City of Warrenville, Illinois continues efforts to address the issues of safety and resilience in the built environment that affect our citizens and gives us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas, our confidence is achieved through the devotion of building safety and fire prevention officials who work to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these officials use a governmental consensus process that brings together local, state, and federal officials with expertise in the built environment to create and implement codes to protect people in the buildings we occupy. And whereas, international codes are used by Warrenville to protect the public from natural disasters. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our code officials and inspectors who assure us of safe and livable buildings. And whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by our building and fire prevention officials in protecting lives and property." Now therefore, I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2020 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join with the community in recognizing Building Safety Month. Public Service Recognition Week, May 3rd through the 9th, 2020. Whereas, Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, and county and city levels. These unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. Their tireless efforts are especially critical today during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, public employees take not only jobs but solemn oaths. And whereas, many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, aid workers, healthcare professionals, intelligence officers, and others risk their lives each day in service to the Constitution and the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas, public servants include teachers, doctors, scientists, and nurses, administrative professionals, street and utility workers, building and safety inspectors, public transportation workers, computer technicians, and social workers, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they continue to fulfill their duties during a public health crisis, even at personal risk, to provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. Therefore, whereas, without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set seal heretofore that the week of May 3rd through the 9th, 2020 is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. And National Public Works Week, May 17th through the 23rd, 2020. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of people. And whereas, public works services are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees, and who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And where it is in the public interest for the citizens of Warrenville to understand the importance of public works and public works programs. And whereas, May 17th through the 23rd marks the National Public Works Week sponsored by American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim May 17th through the 23rd, 2020 as National Public Works Week in the City of Warrenville, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the challenges involved in providing public work services and to recognize the contributions which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Emily, are you with me?
I am here.
51st Anniversary of Municipal Clerks Week. Old. May 3rd through the 9th, 2020. Whereas, the official, the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas, the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas, the Office of Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizen, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas, municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas, municipal clerk serves as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government and Communities. And whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the Office of Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do recognize the week of May 3rd through, uh, May 9th, 2020 as Municipal Clerks Week. And further extend appreciation to our Municipal Clerk, Emily J. Larson, and all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their excellent dedication to the communities they represent. Thank you, Brummel.
Thank you.
National Police Week. We just had a silent round of applause here. I hope you joined in with us. National Police Week, May 10th through the 16th, 2020. To recognize National Police Week 2020 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas, there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, included the dedicated members of the Warrenville Police Department. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, 307 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, including 135 officers killed in 2019 and 172 officers killed in previous years. Whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the virtual National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2020. And whereas, the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 10th through the 16th. And whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, we had resolved that the City of Warrenville formally designates May 10th through the 16th, 2020, as Police Week in Warrenville and publicly salutes the service of all law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation. And that concludes our proclamations for this evening. All very, very worthy notifications of our appreciation, I think. We'll move on to citizens' comments for this evening. We'll hear any verbal or written comments from the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please announce yourself with your name and address. Please speak slowly and clearly so we can capture your information. Once we have everyone speak, wishing to speak, I will call on you one by one to proceed with your comments. So do we have anyone who wishes to speak? Okay? Email comments will be read aloud following verbal comments. We have no verbal comments. Do we have any email comments?
We do.
We have no email comments either. So please understand that once we conclude the citizens' comments portion of our meeting this evening, there will be no other opportunity for the public to comment. All right? We'll move on then to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. I would just add to the list of the people that we wanted to recognize tonight, teachers and nurses. It's my understanding that it's Teachers Month and Nurses Month nationally, two professions that are performing admirably and are way above and beyond the call of duty in our present situation. So thank you to all the teachers out there who are completely redesigning their curriculums to a totally new program. And all of the nurses, and I have to say, I've had personal experience. I was in the hospital for six days last month, and nurses deserve every, everything they get that's positive. All of our thanks and raises too, by the way, because I had nothing but good interaction with the nurses at Central DuPage Hospital. Also, a couple of other things for this evening. The Mayor's Fitness Challenge, I forget which one this is, 15th, 16th, 13th, we've been doing it for a while, it's a lot of fun. It's gonna start again, it's gonna run from May 10th through July 4th. We've reduced it again this year to eight weeks. Registration is currently open, and you can start logging in minutes as of May 10th. If you've done it before, you know the, you know the way it's done. If you haven't to register, you can go to the City of Warrenville website at warrenville-il.us and under the "How Do I?" tab on the homepage, find "Register for Mayor's Fitness Challenge." Remember to practice good social distancing while exercising, gardening, walking, or any other method you choose to get your minutes, but this is an opportunity to fill some hours with something productive other than Facebook. We, I, you cannot log in your Facebook hours to the Mayor's Fitness Challenge. So once again, May 10th through July 4th, any activity that you feel appropriate to log in with, I will be logging in my minutes. It's fun to have a little bit of friendly competition. It also helps to keep track of what you're doing, to give you incentive to get out there and do it. And it'll also, because of social distancing, give you some quiet time for yourself. So please join us, it'll be a lot of fun. A couple of things, on a less happy note, the bike rodeo has been canceled for this year. Hopefully, we'll be able to do it again next year. And sadly, the 4th of July event has also been canceled. Out of an abundance of caution for all who may attend, Warrenville's Friends of the Fourth Committee has voted at a special meeting last Friday evening to cancel this year's 4th of July event. The committee is gonna work on maybe some alternative things that will not require us gathering together, and we'll let you know when they work that out. But they've already got some good ideas of how we might be able to celebrate and still meet the requirements of social distancing. And then finally, for me tonight, the 2020 census. So far, 75% of Warrenville households have responded. That's terrific, that's pretty much in line with the communities that are around us. It'd be nice if we could get a higher percentage than, say, that community to the south of us that's always getting the big numbers. So I would encourage you there, have a little friendly competition with the surrounding communities. 75% is pretty good, we need to do a little bit better. So please, respond either online or by phone, there is still time. And elected officials, when you run into your constituents from a safe, safe distance, please tell them to self-respond as soon as possible to ensure a complete and accurate count for the city, because it does mean revenue for the city and going forward, that will be very important. That's all I have for this evening?
Boards and commissions, on the back page.
Oh. Yeah. I'm sorry, I missed one that was on the back page. One last thing. There are still a couple of vacancies on local boards and commissions if you feel compelled to serve your community. Please, someone feel compelled. Please consider volunteering for the Bicycleists and Pedestrian Advisory Commission or the Environmental Advisory Commission. These are three-year terms that begin May 1st. I would welcome an email from anyone who might be interested to serve. It's a great way to get involved with the community, it's also a great way to make new friends. At some point, we'll be back at having regular meetings again, and it's just a wonderful way again to connect with the community both on a bigger level and on a personal level. So again, Bicycleists and Pedestrian Advisory Commission and the Environmental Advisory Commission. If you're wondering what the charge is for those commissions, you can send me an email, I can get you information, give you an idea of what's involved. Okay, I think I've got it. Clerk?
Mayor, I'm really disappointed that you've canceled my birthday. I'll, I'll understand.
All right, well, we're gonna celebrate twice as hard next year, Emily. How's that?
Okay, catch up. Thank you.
Very good. Treasurer?
No report.
Thank you, Larry. And Alderman, again, I will do what I do for each of these meetings, I will call on you individually to see if you have anything to report here at the beginning of the meeting. Beginning with Alderman Ashauer.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Berry.
Uh, no comment.
Thank you. Alderman Bavir.
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos.
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Goodman.
Just wanted to thank everyone who continues to social distance in the community. I know that staying home isn't a lot of fun, and sometimes people are feeling frustrated. It's very natural to be frustrated, and the psychology is difficult here because it's sort of a, a situation where we're torn between two bad situations, being sick or having a worse economy. And so I hope everyone is able to find things to be cheerful about, enjoy the, the spring weather a little bit, and seeing some flowers bloom out your window, and, uh, please stay inside. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Chrisell.
Looking forward to the Fitness Challenge, as quarantine's done some damage to my, my bathroom scale, so I'm excited to get motivated here and get that taken care of.
I think you're not alone. Alderman Widener.
I have nothing to add there, thank you.
Thank you. And Alderman Wilson.
No comment.
Thank you. City Administrator.
I have nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And City Attorney.
Um, hello, I just wanted to note for the record that the city is holding this virtual City Council meeting pursuant to the authority that was granted in the Governor's Executive Order Number 2020-7, which was recently reissued and continued by Executive Order 2020-31. And these executive orders temporarily suspended certain requirements of the Open Meetings Act in order to allow public bodies to take care of city business while maintaining social distancing. And that's it.
Thank you, Brooke. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener.
Uh, motion to approve the agenda for the May 4th, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
Alderman Davalos, I'd like to remove items. Is this the time to do that?
Okay. This will work.
I would like to remove item A and item B.
Okay, did the motioner and the seconder agree to that change to the agenda?
Motioner agrees.
Seconder agrees.
Uh, anybody else with comments or removals? Okay, then, roll call, please, for approving the agenda as amended. Alderman Berry.
Hi.
Alderman Widener.
Hi.
Alderman Chrisell.
Hi.
Alderman Wilson.
Hi.
Alderman Ashauer.
Hi.
Alderman Goodman.
Hi.
Alderman Bavir.
Hi.
Alderman Davalos.
Hi.
Thank you, Emily. Move on to the approval of one set of minutes this evening. We have a motion, please.
Alderman Widener, motion to approve the minutes of the April 20th, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the approval of the minutes. Any discussion of those minutes? Hearing none. We have a roll call again, please, Emily. Alderman Chrisell.
Hi.
Alderman Wilson.
Hi.
Alderman Bavir.
Hi.
Alderman Berry.
Hi.
Alderman Goodman.
Hi.
Alderman Davalos.
Hi.
Alderman Widener.
Hi.
Alderman Ashauer.
Hi.
Thank you, Emily. I will read the consent agenda as amended for this evening. Item 6C, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and pass Resolution R2020-26, extending the duration of the March 16th, 2020 Declaration of Emergency until the adjournment of the next regular, special, or emergency meeting of the City Council. D, accept staff recommendation and pass Resolution R2020-27, approving an agreement between the City of Warrenville and Compass Mineral America Incorporated for the purchase of bulk rock salt. E, accept staff recommendation and pass Resolution R2020-28, approving the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Warrenville and the Suburban Bus Division of the Regional Transportation Authority, PACE, for the provision of paratransit services. F, accept staff recommendation and pass Resolution R2020-29, approving an agreement with Christine Charikowitz for the provision of legal services. G, receive and file minutes of the Board of Fire and Police Commission Regular Meeting held on February 25th, 2020. H, receive and file report of invoices paid up to April 29th, 2020, in the amount of And I authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before May 18th, 2020, in the amount of $282,632.05. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Alderman Widener, motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second, I, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. May I have a roll call then, please? Alderman Ashauer.
Hi.
Alderman Goodman. Alderman Widener.
Hi.
Alderman Bavir.
Hi.
Alderman Wilson.
Hi.
Alderman Berry.
Hi.
Alderman Davalos.
Hi.
Alderman Chrisell.
Hi.
Okay, uh, the consent agenda as amended has been approved. We'll return to item 6A. Alderman Davalos, did you bring this forward, or did you wish someone else to make the motion?
No, I, I will bring it forward.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept staff recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O2020-21, amending City Code Title III, Chapter II, Section VII, to increase the number of Class B3 liquor licenses and create a new Class E liquor license for Everlet Eve Wine Shop located at 28W 575 Stafford Place.
May I have a second, please?
Second, Alderman.
Second, I, Alderman Berry.
Sound like Alderman Ashauer first. Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Alderman Davalos first, because it was your motion.
Thank you. Thank you. My, um, I just need sort of a clarifying question, because we're creating a new, I guess, class or type of liquor license, it's Class E, and I did read the backup, so I sort of understand what we're doing. Um, but I'd like someone, um, I don't know if it's Mayor, it's you, the Liquor Commissioner, or somebody, to explain exactly the difference between this Class E liquor license and one would, would, that we would give to a restaurant or a place where you would go in and sit down. I'm just a little uncertain.
Okay, perhaps Finance Director Kevin Dollstrand could help us out?
I'll be right back.
I think he hit the wrong button, we'll, we'll wait just a moment. Love these teleconferences.
Okay.
We're waiting for the return of our Finance Director, who inadvertently absented himself from the meeting.
Maybe he did it on purpose.
Okay, I can't even text it. I hope he knows you've disconnected.
There he is.
No, that's still leaving.
All right, perhaps he had an emergency at home?
I can, this is City Attorney Lenaman, I can, I think I can help out.
Excellent, thank you.
So basically, what this ordinance is doing is creating sort of a, a license that would be available to, only to establishments that also have a Class B3 license.
Right.
And a Class B3 license authorizes the licensee to sell alcohol for consumption on premises, but without, I'm sorry, for consumption not on the premises, so packaged alcohol.
Okay.
So basically, it's a liquor store or wine store. And this would allow that same type of premises to also serve that alcohol by the glass on site. So it would be sort of like a wine store that sells bottles of wine that you can take home and also can sell you a glass of wine to drink there.
Okay.
So it's different from a restaurant in that it doesn't, is not a full-service food operation necessarily.
Okay, this is Alderman Davalos again. All right, that, that clears it up, because I kept thinking why, you know, we have, we have some different ones of these numbered licenses, and it, I just needed to understand why this one was different, but, but now I do understand that.
I'm sorry.
And because I'm very much in favor of this, but, um, in fact, I'm actually very excited about this, but I did want to understand exactly what I was voting for. So thank you very much for clearing that up.
Okay, very good. Um, should I go through everyone, give them a chance to? Anyone else have a comment on this? I'll give you an opportunity to comment. Again, we'll go- Again, we'll go to Alderman Ashauer.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Bavir.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Cressell.
No comment.
And thank you, Alderman Widener.
No comment.
Thank you, and Alderman Wilson.
No comment.
Very good, then, let's do a roll call. Alderman Berry? Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Cressell?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. So welcome Everlet Eve Wine Shop to Warrenville. Can't wait for you to open.
I know, I can't wait either.
All right.
I'm really excited.
Absolutely. We're kind of excited, too.
That's awesome. Love it.
Okay, we're going to go on to item 6B. Again, Alderman Davalos, did you wish to bring that forward?
Yes, I would. I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O2020 dash 22, amending city code Title V, Chapter III, Section 6, to prohibit parking on the north side of Mount Street between Stafford Place and Manning Avenue, on the south side of Mount Street for the 130 feet west of Manning Avenue, and on the south and east sides of Rockwell Street, from Mount Street to a point 175 feet north of Ray Street.
May I have a second, please?
Second, Alderman Widener. Either one, take a pick.
All right, Alderman Ashauer gets the call. Discussion will again, begin with Alderman Davalos, because that was your motion. Alderman Davalos?
Yes, again, it's more of a clarifying question. In reading the backup, I'm still uncertain why we're doing this. Is this a request from the Earhart Development? Is this a request from the library? Is this a Public Works? Is this a police fire request? I'm trying to figure out what's happening here.
Okay, this came from a request from a citizen who lives on the street and has gone through the police department. Chief, would you like to clarify for us a little bit?
In Public Works.
And in Public Works also had input. Chief, Chief Toronto?
Thank you, Mayor. We received the complaint of this, that it was hard to navigate with the way the parking was on both sides of the street. I went out there, or one of my officers did. We looked at it, we studied it, had no objection to the recommendation that was from Public Works, and that we basically prohibited parking on one side of the street that would facilitate an easier flow of traffic.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Does that help, Alderman Davalos?
Right, I'm just wondering if, in that process, there was always a lot of discussion when this development was going up about parking for the residents of the new development, and then making sure library and other areas weren't losing a lot of their parking. So part of me is just wondering, trying to look at a wider picture. Certainly, if it's a safety issue, there's probably, it's probably a good decision. But I'm just wondering if anybody thought about, or anybody who lives over there, or I just don't know if we're going to lose enough parking to make it difficult, or to make these residents then parking on more library grounds, as opposed to just trying to park along the streets that go around their development, if they had a need for more parking, like a party or something.
Perhaps, Chief, you could explain, or maybe Phil Kukler, if this is a net gain or loss in parking spaces for the people on the street? Is there a difference compared to what it was before, to the new change? Chief, would you like to chime in?
I think I defer to Phil on this one, if you'd like to chime in.
Yeah, this is Phil. Yep, there was never, the street's not wide enough to have parking on two sides, so from the time the development was approved, there was never intention to have parking on both sides of the street. We were straining out here, based on where the mailboxes are, and the fact that there's been a S curve at the east end of Mount Street, where parking makes sense to prohibit. So as far as the development is concerned, I think there's the same amount of parking spaces as were intended with the, on-street parking spaces, or intended with the approval of the development.
Okay, that clears it up. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. See if anyone else, thank you, Phil. If anyone else has a question or a comment on this item, Alderman Ashauer?
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Bavir.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Cressell.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Widener.
No comment.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
No comment.
Very good. We'll move on into item 7, our regular agenda. We have a discussion of the FY 2021 hiring.
This is Alderman Davalos. Do we have to vote on this one, B?
Yes, the clerk already caught me. She slapped me upside the head, so we're going to have, we're going to have a vote right now. Soon as my mind clears. Emily, please. Alderman Davalos, you're up first.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Cressell?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, Alderman Davalos. We'll now move on to the regular agenda. Item 7A, the potential here, if necessary, for a discussion of the FY 2021 hiring freeze. City Administrator Kukler.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments, and then I'm sure there may be questions I'll be happy to answer. There's a memo in the packet with backup on the attachments to my memorandum are the three departments that would be initially impacted. Each department had wrote a memo, the Deputy Public Works Director, the Police Chief, and the Community Economic Development Director. It's our assessment, though, that the current vacant positions, there's a combination of some are necessary to be hiring soon. We've already delayed the hiring for various reasons of many of those positions. The EMA position, we have not been able to fill yet, that's part-timer, the least cost, I would say, of these positions. The building inspector, we're working towards, the urgency has slowed down a little, because building is still going on very rapidly in the community. However, it's reduced some because of social distancing on work sites, and some of the just things that we're having to deal with out in the trades right now because of that. But there's still a lot of abundance of, we're still at a record level of inspections at permits, so we see that as necessary. Plus, there will be impending retirement, likely now within the next 12 months. Police Department, as you can read, and I might be missing some, but these are some of the key ones, of the positions that will, are currently vacant and will soon be vacant as of early June. There is no academy to be able to send them to for several more months, so those have already been delayed. We have now likely another vacancy that's coming up in the city, that will be coming up over in our police department and civilian position. All of those because of our small staff and resources. They're primarily essential positions under our definitions in the statute, or the state, sorry. Coupled with the recommendation that I'm making, there are administrative procedures that were put in place to review every single position in the city, even with the police and fire classified hiring, before we go ahead for authorized positions that you annually review and approve. You just adopted that ordinance for this current fiscal year in, what positions we actually are allowed to hire for and fill. That puts one limit. Additionally, every single position the department had has to submit to me a what's called a zero-based staffing form. That was added, I believe, in 2009 during the Great Recession, because we had to review the positions, see if they were urgent to hire or not. So those do go over, those do go through another level of scrutiny. Just because we're authorized to have a position doesn't mean we'll fill it automatically. There has been cases over the last 11 years that those have been delayed, or not at least put through some review before we've just hired them. And then annually, you just see where we make changes each year, if we no longer need a position on occasion, or we have to add something. Based on those, all those factors combined, our staff position, my recommendation is that you leave it in the administrative procedures that are currently in place, and we could certainly review that as we give you financial updates, which I anticipate coming probably as soon as the next meeting, about how we're doing, at least what we know at that point. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let's go through our list again, to see if anybody has questions or comments. Alderman Ashauer?
No questions.
Very good, thank you. Alderman Berry?
I only have one comment. I'm glad to see that the maintenance engineer would kind of be put on hold and let the vendors take care of this for a while. I think that's a very good idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Bavir?
No questions.
Very good. Alderman Davalos?
Yes, I just had a comment. I would like to thank these departments for putting, taking the time to put together this memo, because the general idea of hiring freezes and has, we've touched on this a little bit between the budget and the COVID, and a lot of uncertainty, but it's hard to make a decision, as I feel as an Alderman, on hiring freezes, just on the idea of them. It really helps to have this kind of detail, going through each position and really getting and understanding from the directors about how they're feeling, what the plans are. I agree with Alderman Berry. I thought that was kind of an interesting idea in Public Works. So I just appreciated this set of memos a lot, as I thought about the general topic of hiring freeze. It kind of let me drill down the details and hone in decisions that I would perhaps have going forward if it came up. So I just wanted to express my appreciation.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I would second Alderman Davalos's comment about agreeing with Alderman Berry. I think that Director Kukler's memo, setting forth the costs and benefits of trying outside contractors instead of hiring a fleet management technician, and how it looks like that may in fact save money. It's hard to say, but it might. It's pretty close, but that was really helpful information, and I appreciated that. I do have some questions, though, about the police chief's memo, which I don't felt, I feel like it didn't really answer the question. The impact of a hiring freeze would have the following impact, is what it says. But it seems to me that having the police academy closed is what has those impacts. We already have the police academy closed. We can't expect the new officers that are recruits to go through the academy and be hired until the previous class of recruits in the academy can go through and be hired. And it says that if the newest, or the soonest that we could potentially see graduated recruits would be May of 2021. So I guess the information that I would have liked to see in this memo is then what's the financial implication of that on this year's budget, you know? How much of a difference does it make budget-wise between having people hired now and employing them for the entire year, between now and next May? Next May is when next year's budget begins, not this year's budget, so the difference seems to matter to me, how much it costs to send them to the academy. I'm sure that there are some expenses that would be incurred in this year, or this fiscal year, rather, and not next fiscal year. I would like to see information about that. And several of the items that he lists here as impacts, about having the POP unit personnel, filling shifts, and so on, I mean, that seems to me that it must be happening anyway because of the vacancies that exist and the academy being closed for some indefinite period of time. So I guess my questions are, what are the impacts of the academy being closed? That's one set of questions. And then what are the budget impacts of the hiring freeze, which seems to be a different question, which is not answered? Thank you.
Okay, Chief, would you like to address these questions now, or later?
No, I can address some of them now. I tried to give you a worst-case scenario on when, and it was speculative, on when the academy would be back up and running. I don't have any hard and fast information on that. I don't have a date. That'll all be up to them. If in the event that the academy, let's say they say September 1st, they're going to reopen their doors and resume, you would have one class that would finish two weeks, and then another class would go through their 14 weeks of training, all right, which would take you to September, October, November, middle of December. We have never hired, nor would we ever hire an officer, until we could send them to the academy. There's no point in that. But in the event that you put a hiring freeze in place, that means even if, let's say, we could get an officer in December 1st, if there's a hiring freeze in place, then we can't hire the officer, period, until that hiring freeze is lifted. Additionally, what I did notice, that I have one person that's on extended workman's comp for an injury. I have no idea when that person will come back, or if they'll come back. I don't know if a disability may be involved in that or not. And additionally, I have one officer that is on, he's a military reservist, and he has gone on a deployment for a year, so he won't be back. So yeah, I get to take, at this point in time, in order to adequately staff the POP unit and the Traffic Enforcement Unit and put them on a shift. However, in the event of a hiring freeze for at least those two positions, that would remain, and I've tried to explain this before, that officer, from the time they raise their right hand to the time they graduate, essentially, they're not, before you can put them out on a solo patrol, you're talking about a year. So that means that we lose some of these specialized units, and the ability to do some of the specialized things that we do, absent having those people. Now, the implications, I think, are, you know, you're talking the salaries, and I don't know, Kevin, what's the starting salary, about 50-something thousand?
I don't know, panel, I'm looking up while you're talking, go right ahead.
Okay, but I think what you're talking about, what you're saving is, you know, however many months that you're not paying them, but then realize that you're going to incur some overtime. So I don't know if that answers any of your questions or not.
City Administrator, could I ask something?
Yeah, I want to comment real quickly. I had asked each of the staff for the impacts. Alderman Goodman, when you just, your comments now, I realize I did not ask specifically for the fiscal impacts, just the impacts, which I was thinking more of what the impact would be on operations, which the chief did answer. The other two departments did answer both impacts of fiscal and operational, but I want to be fair to the chief, I didn't give him that instruction when I asked for the questions, nor did anybody else.
Okay, Alderman Goodman, any follow-up?
Yes, so I guess my question is then, if we're going to get any more information, I would be interested in knowing what, not just the cost of their salary at hiring, but the cost of sending them to the academy, and I presume we must equip them as well during that point. So you're, I think what you're saying, if I'm following you correctly, is that you don't think we could even begin the hiring process until a hiring freeze is lifted, or that December is too soon to talk about lifting a hiring freeze? I may not be understanding you, but I feel like the staff had talked about doing a new fiscal reassessment in November, so if we did have a hiring freeze until December, and the absolute earliest anybody could be available to be hired would be December, or possibly May, as is said in the memo, unless I'm not following that, that we would be able to have a discussion with more information about our fiscal condition in November, as we've already planned to do. And that would be before December or next May, which would be all right then, unless I'm not hearing you.
Okay, well, let me see if I can go through one at a time. Again, I have no way of forecasting when the academy will open. If for some reason they- If for some reason they decide to open at an earlier time, and let's say they say, look, we'll be able to run two academy classes, but what we're gonna do is we're gonna start one at six o'clock in the morning and the other one at two o'clock in the afternoon, well, we may be able to get them in earlier. Uh, but I have no control over that, you know, almost like if they did a split schedule, as they do in some high schools. Um, what I'm understanding with a hiring freeze, uh, is that if there is a hiring freeze, there's no, there's no even reason to bring forward hiring anybody because you're not filling the position. So essentially, those positions are being vacant by attrition, okay? And the costs of the academy are their salary and their benefits. Um, we're reimbursed for the cost of the academy through the Training and Standards Board, for the state of Illinois.
Okay, uh, thanks, Chief. Alderman Goodman.
Thank you. Um, what, what, one last piece of this that I just wanna make as a comment is that I feel like the discussion that we're having is sort of only one, one half of the conversation about, um, costs of a hiring freeze, and we're not necessarily thinking about, um, the other half of it, which is that the city administrator sent around a memo, um, I guess it was last month, talking about the steps that we need to take as a city going forward. I think he sent this to all staff, and I was happy to, as was everyone else in the council, where we know that, that revenue is gonna be lower, and one of our key goals going forward is to maintain services to the community and to maintain our current staff. Um, I think that information we get between now and November will give us a much better financial picture about our ability to maintain current staff. And I think that if by then, um, the picture looks very bad and we're worried about maintaining current staff, that, uh, hiring new people is, um, generally speaking, a lower priority than our ability to maintain our current people. And so that's my perspective on this, and I feel like that part of this conversation isn't really being had.
Okay, uh, City Administrator Coakley.
Thank you. I think Christina's gonna do follow-up on my comments, uh, but Alderman, uh, Goodman, I agree in principle completely that the goal, um, this is what I'm following, and I haven't gotten pushback from anybody in a big way yet, is to make sure that we can maintain the current city services and the current city employees. That noted, and, and that would be a higher priority than bringing in some new folks if we had to make those decisions on who was gonna go and who was gonna stay, of course. But given that, with some limited resources, certain positions do have other impacts. We're trying to balance those, um, so for example, the inspector, if we waited, and that's not what's on the table right now, we're discussing police, but if it was the inspector, we decided to wait until December to decide to hire, by the time we could get through a recruitment and get someone ready to go, we would have almost no overlap with the current incumbent on that position. And there's some nuances like that, so it's, there's some case-by-case review of this that, that makes some difference. That's why it was very valuable to have these memos from the senior staff. The police department, the, the difficulty there always is the long time between the time they're brought on board, and then it could be a, a short time that they start the academy, but essentially, it's a year for most of those folks until they're on solo patrol. We're, in a budgetary sense, in a very efficiency sense, no, no reflection on their, their abilities, that's really when they're giving back a hundred percent to the community, because they're not on a ride-along where they're learning, where you've got them doing work, but somebody supervising them, and that's their job. You don't have one hundred percent of a police officer, in my view, again, an efficiency measure, not a quality measure, um, giving back. So we have to take all of those things into account. I think that's where the chief's primary concerns are, is we lose the flexibility for the, we're not gonna probably, if we wait till December to bring on the recruits that we have currently on the list, we're gonna lose most of them, so they've gotta go through a whole new scrutiny of the Border Police and Fire Commission. That's even a somewhat more, uh, difficult process than the general recruitment for non-sworn folks, in my view. Um, so that delays it even further. If we wait till December, I believe the chief is indicating you're probably as good as waiting until May anyway, uh, if we lie that way. Now, back to the fiscal issues, certainly every dollar we can save is important right now as this whole problem with the economy related to this pandemic rolls out. Uh, I have a little bit more information in working, uh, process with the finance director than we did, uh, two weeks ago or four weeks ago, and that will try to get out to the council, I hope, with the next meeting. We can give you a little financial update based on the projections. It's still projections because it's still evolving, uh, and you know that, but, um, we can give a little more information. That's why some of this also, uh, is evolving in our, in our recommendations. Uh, Christina, may you have some other comments to fill in?
Um, I, I'm hoping that I can just maybe summarize a little bit to clarify. Um, everything that was said by City Administrator Coakley and, and chief is, is absolutely correct and accurate. Part of this, part of the challenge with this is we know some positions are ready, that are empty and, uh, need to be filled in order to meet those essential service requirements that we talked about in the memo. There's also positions that are unknown, where people will leave, uh, for whatever reason, uh, whether that be retirement or finding other jobs, where those positions might become available. The city, as everyone knows, we staff very, uh, on a very lean basis to complete those essential services. Um, having a broad across-the-city hiring freeze, uh, would mean that we wouldn't fill any positions that become open, which will have a likely impact on, one, our ability to provide service, and two, as chief alluded to, uh, will likely increase the overtime expenses, which may be counterproductive to saving, uh, costs in terms of, of expenses. So, uh, what City Administrator Coakley is recommending, or what staff is recommending in the memo, is that we will scrutinize every position that is currently open, that becomes open, to determine if it is indeed essential to fill, um, and can be filled, then we will move forward. If there are positions that are not necessarily essential right now to fill, or can be delayed, then we will delay them. Um, some will be delayed naturally, as again, both chief and city administrator said, because of a variety of reasons. Um, but we really recommend and suggest that we look at each position on a case-by-case basis, administrative process that already exists versus a city-wide hiring freeze that would have other implications.
Thank you, Christina. Alderman Goodman, um, anything else, or are you good?
Thanks for the answers. I think that's very helpful.
All right, thank you. Uh, Alderman Chrisell, anything to add to this, uh, discussion?
Uh, nothing to add, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Widener.
Nothing to add, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, and Alderman Wilson.
Nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. That includes the regular agenda for this evening. We have nothing under unfinished business, nothing under new business, no need for a closed session, just a bit of, uh, explanation. Um, while all of you are on the phone, there are four of us in the gallery, and we are socially distanced very safely so that we can run this meeting a little bit more efficiently. So when I was joking before about Emily giving me a dope slap, that would not be possible. She's not close enough, thank goodness, uh, but I just wanted to clarify that we're being very careful at City Hall when we're here. Um, finally, uh, we just need one more motion. Who would like to do that?
Alderman Davalos, I make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Did you get eight of those?
Yes. I, it's amazing how enthusiastic you are about this motion. All right, we have a motion in a second. I'm gonna take a, a- Okay, who wants to second it officially?
Second by Alderman Wilson.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, and, uh, let's hear the enthusiasm now. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.